Recession to study session for treasurer's financial report and review of city's vehicle noise ordinance. I need a motion in a second.
Salute.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're in study session.
Since we have, I think we have a number of people here to address the topic, we could start with the noise ordinance if that's okay with the mayor and the council.
That's fine with me.
And I'm sure they're all gonna wanna stick around for the treasurer's financial report afterwards, so. So, the city's noise ordinance, as you know, was adopted back in 2003 at the urging of a white group of citizens that were concerned about the noise in neighborhoods into the city. It's been, you know, a little over eleven years since that was adopted. A lot of things have changed. I think that my, I wasn't here when it was adopted, but I've been told by a number of people that things have been quieter since we adopted that ordinance. That ordinance was laid out to say that any time the sound amplification system can be heard seventy-five feet or more away from the vehicle on a public right-of-way, so on a city street, or any street in the community, any public right-of-way, that the driver could be fined two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, the owner of the vehicle could be fined two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, sometimes with the same person, sometimes they're not. The car would immediately be impounded and help to the owner will respond, and then there would be a hearing afterwards if an individual wants to have some due process and have that matter heard to see if it was a, or, you know, plead their case, they do have the opportunity to do that. And we hear those through administrative court. Since the ordinance was adopted back in 2003, we've had sixteen-hundred-and-twenty-seven cases in eleven years. We had a low of ninety-three back in 2006, and a high of two-hundred-and-thirty-nine for the year in 2007. Of the total cases, about twelve percent are repeat offenders. But in the last three years, we've seen a decrease in the number of repeat offenders down to a percentage of less than five percent of repeat offenders. This calendar year, the city police department through the end of September has issued ninety noise ordinance violations, and so that's about one every three days. I just offer that up so, I don't know if there's a feeling that we're issuing multiple ordinance violations like that a day, so there's ninety which is about one, about one every three days. Now, we do know that the vast majority of these violations are typically far in excess of seventy-five feet, I think, on most of the cases that we see. There's been a lot of conversation. I really think the question before you tonight, from my perspective, is, I think everybody likes the result of the ordinance. We like to have a quieter community, a better quality of life, but what level of punishment is necessary to achieve the same result? And that's the question that sits before all of us tonight and before the city council. Hopefully, the staff and I provide you some background, some information on the fine structure. We're certainly here tonight to offer, answer any questions you might have, or answer any questions of the public, too. Some of you were on this council when this ordinance was adopted, so you've seen the entire lifetime of it, and so if there's any questions at all that staff and I can answer, that's all the opening comments I had.
Hello, everyone. I'm sure you all remember me. My name is Lisa Creason. How are you this evening? First, I would like to state for the record that everyone in this room agrees that there should be a noise ordinance. The only movement and the only objection we have to the noise ordinance is that individuals are losing their cars because of music. It is posing a hardship, not only to the families, but to many auto dealers as we submitted seven-hundred signatures and several business owners to you at our last representation here. First off, I would like to address an article that the Herald &amp; Review published on Saturday. In this article, several of my comments from the previous session were brought up and quoted on, one of which was by city manager Mr. Grady, who was quoted as saying, "Decatur police have the discretion to write a ticket for a state ordinance or a city ordinance violation. However, when asked, the city police department states that they are mandated to tow the vehicle upon music." We've had two police chiefs that have spoken out against this ordinance because it's failed time that they could be used spending, solving violent crimes, and stopping illegal activities such as drug dealing. Another comment that was made in this paper was, "I don't know that all speeding has the same impact on the quality of life as loud music does." So, in response to that, I submit to you the 2012 statistics published by the U.S. Department of Transportation. As you will see, in 2012, ten-thousand-two-hundred-and-nineteen people were killed due to speeding. If you move to page four, you will see that that report includes dry roads as well as wet roads, so all conditions. Further down that page, you will see that thirty-five percent of those fatalities are committed in a construction zone, so individuals who are going to work to earn a living, to take care of their families, who lose their lives because of a speeder. These statistics show that speeding does, in fact, impact the quality of life of many people, and in fact, ends it in many cases. So, in all fairness, I also researched how many fatalities were caused by loud music, and I found none. Mr. McGrady did, however, point out a valid point in the article that a group of citizens came to the council complaining of loud music, which they did. I get it. I'm a mom. I'm a grandma. I have one-year-old twins I put to bed every weekend at eight-thirty at night. I am always irritated if I hear loud music down my street. Do they deserve a ticket? Absolutely. Do you need to stop them? Yeah, you do. Should they lose their car because of it? Absolutely not. At that time, when this ordinance was ordained, the complaint was that many of the cars in the city were, they had added stereo equipment. They had subs and amplifiers that shook the windows. However, now, cars with blown speakers, factory speakers, turning up the radio will get your car completely taken. I mean, just think about it. How much stuff do we do with our cars? We take our kids to school. We go to the grocery store. That's how we get to work. That's how we get our kids to the doctor's appointment. Taking someone's car for music is taking their livelihood. So, if we move on, I would also like to point out that we are not asking for the noise ordinance to disappear. We are asking for people to be able to maintain their ability to take care of their family and themselves, because that's what it comes down to. With that being said, I do not like to bring up points that I cannot provide some form of evidence for to substantiate my claim, so I would also like to submit a published report by Athens County Job and Family Services entitled Lack of Transportation: A Symptom of Poverty, as Well as a Cause of Poverty. There you go. I will not spend a lot of time on this. It was published in Ohio. However, poverty is no different in Ohio than it is here in Illinois. It's a problem that affects all communities nationwide. With as many businesses as we have leaving Decatur, the last thing we need to do is be the reason that more of our members of our community lose their jobs. In closing, I would like to reiterate that we are not in opposition of the noise ordinance, only the confiscation of the cars. We are only asking that that part of the noise ordinance be removed because it serves no true benefit to the community or the city. It only proves as a hardship. One in three? One in three? So, every three days, you have a member of your community that loses their car. Every day. One in three? One in three? That's too many people that we are risking their employment. Nobody checked to see how many of those cars are really actually claimed. You know why? Because they don't wanna know. They don't wanna know how many lives they've affected. We can still be a deterrent with the fines. We can still gather money for the city if we utilize our ticket program that we have in place. Thank you.
My name is Angelo Wheeler. Well, after that, I don't think I have much to say. I think she covered most of it. I would like to say, though, like Lisa said, we do not, or we do believe that there should be an ordinance, there should be a penalty. I think if that penalty is gonna be towing of vehicles, I think that should happen on the third attempt, and the reason for that is because, you know, you have parents, you have friends that lend their car to, you know, another friend, or maybe even a child of theirs, and, you know, then all of a sudden they get a phone call saying their vehicle's been towed for something that they didn't even do. All they did was trusted somebody. I think after, I think after that happens a couple of times, then maybe you will learn who to trust and who not to trust on driving the vehicle. So, I think it'll be fair if you amend the amendment on the towing of vehicles in that form, in that fashion. I think if anybody agree with Lisa and myself, I think, you know, now's the time to probably come up and say that you do. Thanks.
My name is Brandon Stovall, and I agree.
I'm Eddie McKnight, and I also agree with Lisa. She has too many points on this issue. She's covered every base here. I don't see why you guys should oppose it. She deserves it.
My name is John Taylor, and I agree.
My name is Mike Smith, and I agree.
Eddie McKnight, Sr., I agree.
Charles King, I agree.
Minnie Walker, and I agree.
Natako Bobby, and I agree.
My name is Lisa Stanley, and I agree with everyone, and I just wanna say thank you for taking the time to listen and having the study session. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Is that it?
Sherry Procaroni again. I'm not sure what's all gonna be said during the study session, but I, and I'm sure there's some brainstorming going on, but I was just thinking as they were talking, and wondered if it would not be wise to try a third-attempt situation on a trial basis and see if everyone cooperates, then maybe that would work, and if there isn't cooperation then within the city, then you could consider, you know, going back to something else, or modifying a little bit, and give everyone a chance to cooperate. Or perhaps something like, if it's really the wee hours of the morning where hard-working people who want to keep their jobs are trying to sleep, then perhaps, then the car could be impounded. So, maybe there's some things that could be, you know, thrown on the table in that respect. So, thank you.
My name is James Root, 2480 South Baltimore. From listening to these citizens out here, I'm hearing the common phrase is that towing vehicles for violations that are not typical for towing motor vehicles, this should be renamed city season vehicles for traffic violations. The noise ordinance is a statute that can be handled through a state statute. Towing the vehicle by itself is something contrary to it, and I believe this is all found under section thirty-three of the municipal code, or thirty-four, under the city's code under section thirty-seven, removable vehicles. I think the city council should take a look at this code and see that there's a lot of things in there, and that there's a lot of things being done that would be in contrary to what the citizens of the Decatur and surrounding area would feel would be appropriate. I'm gonna give you an instance in which I know of two things that have taken place over the last year, in which I feel which is wrong to citizens. The first one came to my attention in May of 2014, of a gentleman that came over to my house for a cookout. He'd indicated that he had been stopped by the city police department and was, for tinted windows. Subsequently, his vehicle was impounded under the unlawful use of motor vehicle ordinance. He was then had to pay two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to get his vehicle out of the, or for the fine for the city Decatur, plus he had to pay for his towing and his storage, which could have been a result of maybe three or four hundred dollars that this gentleman would not have had. He was pulled over for tinted windows. He had a no valid driver's license, which I'm seeing in the ordinance, that no valid driver's license is a indicator that you can tow the vehicle for. His girlfriend and three-year-old daughter was in the car at the time. They could very easily release this vehicle to this lady and let him go on their way. Instead, they impounded the vehicle, and what it essentially did was penalized him for a second time of driving without a license or with a tinted windows. Second incident came to my attention this weekend. My son was driving westbound on Wood Street. He was stopped by a city police officer. He'd been suspended for two days. He was issued a state citation for driving while license was suspended. His vehicle was impounded. He was charged with unlawful use of a motor vehicle. I had to pay two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to the city for that ordinance violation just to get the release off of the vehicle. Two days my car set in, or his car set in impound, I had to pay two days' storage for a vehicle that should have been just released or impounded, and I would have had to pay seventy-five dollars. Because we had to pay the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to the city, it compounded the amount of money that it took for me to get that vehicle out of. I think that the city council should actually look at this entire code to see if this is in contrary to what the citizens of Decatur are looking at. Thank you.
Anybody else? Firstly, thank you for the professionalism that was given this issue. We will give our professionalism in a later date when we come back to discuss this, but I do very, very much appreciate the way that everything was presented, so. We will go, we will recess to a study session for the treasurers. I thought, I thought we weren't gonna, yeah, I thought we weren't gonna.
Do you, do you have any, you wanna take any questions from the council? I don't know if anybody has and you're not.
Okay. Okay. That's fine. Hey, hey, folks, if you wanna stay, we are gonna take questions. I had, I was, I guess I misunderstood what we were gonna do, so that's on me. All right. Pat?
For the public, will you clarify what's in, what's covered in the noise ordinance? What kind of noise besides music? Is there anything else?
Wendy, is there music? Is it, is any other kind of noise that's part of that? I know the ordinance specifically talks about sound amplification.
It's not.
So, we got it.
We got it.
We got it.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's specifically noise. It doesn't limit it to music.
Okay, I mean, I've been asked, I mean, by, during this discussion, people say, you know, dual exhaust motorcycles. Now, we're having a real problem with the motorbikes. They make tremendous noise. So, again, people are asking, so I just wanted to make sure this was clarified. And are we going after those, that noise problem, too?
Maybe the chief can talk to that, or what your options are for dealing with that.
Mayor, council. Right now, I would say probably ninety-nine point nine percent of all of our noise ordinance are, or sound amplification is geared towards music.
Okay.
It's not to say it can't be, but it's, you know, sound amplification, so they're using some type of system to amplify the sound.
Okay. Again, people have just been asking me here the last month or so. Doctor?
Is it possible for me to ask you a question while you're still there?
Sure.
Now, is there a way, when the police officer stops a person, for them to tell if that's their first offense, second offense, or third offense?
Not at this time.
Is it possible to get some sort of equipment so that that can be done? Or what needs to be done so that a police officer can tell how many offenses the person has with the noise ordinance violation?
We could look into it. I don't know what it would take. It'd be some type of computer program, probably from City LEO to match up what we have in our cars.
Right, so when an officer pulls somebody over, they're accessing their state citation and criminal data in the squad car. The unlawful use, or the noise ordinance violations are a matter of city code violation, which is a civil matter. Is that correct, Wendy? And so, civil matters don't get entered into the state database. And so, we would have to try to build some kind of bridge from the criminal record system that the police officers use over to the city of what we call our in-code, or our code violation system. And the, one of the issues is, it might not always be the same car. The license plate number could change, the offender or the operator could change, and so it's, that's gonna present us some challenge. But the way the systems are today, they do not interface, and the officers do not automatically get that information when they pull somebody over.
So, with, so the only thing that they can see is the statewide, nothing with city, with local? Like with the park district, or not park district, with the parking issue, when they're able to pull people over, if there's multiple parking tickets, they're able to tell that. There's nothing that can bridge the two systems or anything, and I'm just speculating. I don't know, but.
I, I'm, I don't, I don't believe that our downtown parking violations are evident to the officer in the squad car either, are they?
They are.
Are they?
Yes, we can get to those now.
Okay. So, is it possible then to have a bridge with that? Also, I mean, so it is a possibility. This is not out of the realm of possibility, and it's not necessarily going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm not an IT person. I'm sure it can be done. It just depends on how that, you know, is done.
Okay, 'cause this was the main question I posed previously, is if there is a way for the police officer to see if it's the first, or second, or third time, then we should have a graduated fine system.
We could, we can check and see what it would cost to do that. Here's a couple of things to consider as we do it. Vehicles are easy to track with license plate numbers or VIN numbers. The offender could borrow my vehicle today, and hers tomorrow, and yours the next day, and so they could get offenses in different vehicles, and so we need to be able to track both the offender, the driver, and also the actual vehicle itself. And we can check and see what it would cost to have an interface written between our code enforcement system and the Sun Guard system used by the police department.
Because, because your point that you just used is my biggest fear. Of course, my son is only four, so he's not gonna be borrowing my car, but for a parent whose child may be borrowing their car, and we know how kids are, they don't necessarily listen to everything that we say, and they may have the music turned up loud, and if a parent whose child has their car towed away, now that is undue burden, and that parent is not necessarily a bad parent, did not necessarily condone the child to do it, but now that parent doesn't have a car for several days because the child blasted the music. And so, that, those type of situations, what I'm concerned about as well. So, I want us to try to find a way so that the police officers can tell that this is the first, second, or third offense, so that we're not, so that the punishment matches the crime.
And we can, if the council chooses to amend the ordinance in that manner, we will need some time to figure out how to write that interface within the two programs. So, it's, in terms of the current data systems we have right now, it doesn't work, but that doesn't mean it can't. We just have to figure out, and I'm not an IT person either, but I know people that are.
I would say, that issue is, we need to address, I think Councilman Dawson brought this up a month ago. Again, I'm in favor of not taking the car in the first or second time, but we need to get away from this issuing a ticket to the owner of the car. It should be the person that's violating the ordinance. Again, you can tell by a driver's license whether that person has, you know, had one, two violations, or three. Third time, I don't care whose car it is, you know, if you keep loaning a car to somebody that keeps violating the noise, you take the car. So, again, is that, Councilman Dawson, is that one of your issues that you brought up?
Well, I do have a problem any time the owner's on the hook when they had nothing to do with the violation, but with the chief here and Mr. McGrady, do we have how many state citations we have written for this violation?
I don't know off the top of my head. I don't know if I've ever written any at all.
I know, there'd be very few.
Yeah.
Okay. Why is that? I mean, has the police department been told, "This is what we want you writing"?
I don't know if we've been told, but certainly over the years, this has worked. It has quieted the neighborhoods. You know, before this ordinance went into effect, we did write the seventy-five-dollar tickets, or the state ticket. It didn't work as well, certainly, and I think that's why this ordinance was enacted.
Well, and to roll the clock back to 2003, I would think that the council would probably be upset if they went to the effort to pass an ordinance, and then they didn't write it. So, I mean, if they're gonna, if the council's gonna pass an ordinance and put it on the books, I would expect that the city staff is gonna have to, have to enforce it.
But the problem I have is, there's noise ordinances, and there's noise. If somebody's got the speakers in the back, and I mean, it's rattling your fillings, I think that's what we're wanting to target here, but if the kid just cranks up the song 'cause he likes it, I don't know why we can't write the state citation and not tow the vehicle. But, I mean, in extreme cases, or the driver has such a poor attitude, he's bought himself this violation. I mean, I've pulled over people that have talked themselves into tickets. But I do think that this is so severe that it should just be for the very extreme cases, and I think the state statute should be able to handle, you know, your problem child.
Well, the, I mean, and I understand that flexibility, but we also have to be careful that we have some fair and consistent justification for how we write citations, because otherwise you're gonna, you're gonna lend yourself to, you know, they, I got a, I didn't get a state citation, I got a city citation for some other reason, so.
Well, you may go into shoplifting. Sometimes we arrest them on criminal charges, and sometimes, so that really doesn't, you know, there's no consistency there. Well, it's a second offense, yeah, it's a criminal charge, but I'm just saying, this is extreme, and it should be for the serious violator.
I'm curious if you know, what are other cities doing? I mean, this seems kind of harsh to me, because, you know, okay, it's annoying to me if somebody next to me has a really loud speaker, but it's not gonna put my life in danger. If somebody's texting and driving, that puts my life in danger. If they're speeding, we don't take their car away. This is really annoying, and it shouldn't happen, but, I mean, they're not dangerous, they're just irritating.
Well, I wanna be clear, the staff and I aren't advocating for anything. We're going to enforce whatever you decide you want to adopt. I would say that the ordinance in Decatur, I don't believe they have something like this in Springfield. Wendy, I don't know if you know what other cities have. Springfield has a noise ordinance, but it's not a tow on the first offense. They have some ramping up, I believe.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not familiar with Springfield's, and I haven't looked for a while. When this was first enacted, and over the years, when we've looked at it, it's comparable, the fine, some cities vary on fine, but this was modeled actually on the city of Chicago's and Peoria's at that time, where the two, and since that time, in the last eleven years, most major cities have adopted some form or fashion.
And did they tow the vehicle on the first offense?
I haven't looked for, they all did.
Yeah, at that time.
I cannot tell you what they're doing now.
Thank you.
Larry?
Just a few comments. I have what Councilman Ray brought up. I could support the consideration of not having it towed on the first offense, but only if we've got a way of identifying and having a system to determine whether it's a first or second offense. If we don't have that, then I don't know that I'd wanna change, but, you know, we give a free ticket for the first offense on parking, which is neither here nor there, but we do that, but I think I agree with Councilman Moore, it is a little harsh on the first time up, but I'm very strong on the thought that if the repeat offenders, tow them in every time and hit them hard on the penalties, because there's an alternative, and the alternative is to turn the music down.
With that, I would think, though, that we should have a pretty substantial fine the first time around, because if it's a light fine, it's not a big deal. A big fine, to me, is punishment now, collecting that fine. I don't know what kind of hurdles that would mean for city staff.
time and, and hit them hard on the penalties, because there's an alternative, and the alternative is to turn the music down.
With that, I would think, though, that we should have a pretty substantial fine the first time around, because if it's a light fine, it's not a big deal. A big fine, to me, is, is punishment. Collecting that fine, I don't know what kind of hurdles that would mean for city staff. I, that, that might be an expensive, whole other issue.
Yeah, I mean, fine collection's difficult, and, and, I mean, without a doubt, the, the towing is, is the raw tooth of the ordinance. That's what was put in back in 2003, and obviously that was done to, to get people's attention, and, and it did. I mean, there's a lot of people here tonight. Collection of fines, we do the best we can, and we can't go shut somebody's water off because they didn't pay the noise ordinance fine. I mean, we have, you have to be realistic about what your, what your abilities are to collect those things. And obviously getting the car back is the incentive to pay the fine, with, without a doubt. So we have to, we have to understand that probably the collection of the fine will go down on, on those offenses where you don't tow the car. But this has never been set as a money-making option for the city.
No.
That was never the goal. That's never been communicated to the police department, go out, we need some money, you know, baby needs a new pair of shoes, go write some ordinance violations. That's not what we're doing. And we don't do that, and we will never do that here.
This, there were people that literally walked in here and said, you've got to do something. We can't sit on our porches, we can't put our kids to bed, driving up and down all night, and, 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 you know, if you follow this, I, I was one that was, I mean, I would, my, my other job, I would be in the convenience stores making calls, and the windows would rattle up and down Pershing Road. I mean, it's, it's a lot better today than it was then. Now, I was very, very, as I said earlier, I was very encouraged, by the way, in the tone of, of this meeting, because this is something that can get out. This is, hey, there's, there's, we're talking about exactly is what the young lady said, their livelihoods. They're talking about their livelihoods. Well, I understand that, but I also understood at that particular time when we had these people calling us and being in here and sitting there saying, I am scared to go out on my front porch. I don't think anybody should have to be scared to go out on their front porch in the summer. I think that there has to be something. Not everybody that turns their music up is trying to abuse it. They just like the loud music. And, and when you get sixty-three, you're going to regret it, because I don't hear about half the stuff people say. But, but the fact remains that, that, that they aren't all, you know, bandits. I understand that, but it's awful easy when you got three or four guys in a car and you got that cranked, and you're, and, you know, you might have gone off Lake Shore Drive, and then you go into one of the neighborhoods, you know? At, at that particular point, if they're trying to, you're trying to put your kids to bed, or, or, you know, you, and that car comes by and keeps the kids up or whatever, or scares grandma and grandpa that they, they have to go inside because they're scared what's going to happen, it's, it's not a good way to live. You know, that's, that's, so if we can find a, a happy medium somewhere in this, but there has to be pain. If you're going to, if you're going to disturb the, the peace, there has to be some pain when you get caught. I mean, maybe this isn't the, the way, and I'm not saying for one minute that, that I think that's the only way, but I will tell you this, it worked. I mean, we have less noise in this community, and, and we have less aggravation and telephone calls and different things, and I think people enjoyed their summer to be able to sit outside. So.
Mayor, can I ask the police chief, while he's up here, tell me how this works? I mean, are you guys out looking for noise violators, or do you just happen upon them? Or, or do you get calls? Can you walk me through this?
Well, sometimes we get calls from the neighborhoods that say, you know, my neighbor down the street, they're always playing loud music, or cars are going down the street playing loud music. Looking at the ninety this year, it appears that a lot of them, or about forty percent of them, are generated from the bike patrol officers that are in the neighborhood. And I believe that's the case, and this is a guess, just because the violators don't see the bike officers as they would see a, a police car. And that kind of starts, you know, the bike officers will call to a, a squad car to pull the, the violator over. But usually it's, certainly the bike officers are in the inner-city neighborhoods, and that's where we get most of the complaints on noise or anything else. So that's where a lot of them started, at least this summer.
Mayor? Yes, ma'am. I don't think anybody I've talked to that wants to see the, the ordinance change a little, as opposed to a high fine. You have, as Councilman Moore, you have to have a deterrent. Okay, if you're not going to take the car, you have to have a deterrent. And although I agree with Councilman Dawson on, on who gets charged in that, our problem is we just had an example, it cost us $41,000, where one inspector interpreted the law different, the rules, and cost us $41,000, where everybody before that didn't nail us on a violation. So, you know, you get into, and you've been a police, you know, officer and sheriff, so you know there's, you know, if everybody interprets it the way they want to, that, that also creates some problems. But I think the issue, as far as I'm concerned, is not taking the car if it doesn't belong, you know, till maybe the third time, not charging the owner of the car, even if, you know, if they're not driving it. I mean, that, I think that would clear up some problems. But how do we, how do we go after, you know, we, when we give a parking ticket, or not a parking ticket, a speeding ticket, we don't take the car, but how, how hard is it to get the, the fine?
When we do a speeding ticket, that's handled through circuit court.
Okay.
And so we're not part of that. I'll give you an example, on the parking tickets, those are city, city fees. People don't pay their parking tickets. Eventually, we, we go to collections and try to recoup them. The other thing the city does is we have a debt check system. So let's say you have a hundred dollars in unpaid parking tickets, you don't pay them, but you come in to get a building permit or a, a permit for your business. We ask people to settle up the things they owe the city when they come in to get those other permits.
And it's same with, let's say, water?
So, yeah, well, water's, water's a different story, because there's a lot of state laws that control access to public water, and we have to be sensitive to those. So water is, is a unique, unique situation as far as how we handle, how we handle water shut-offs and payment of past bills. But this would, I mean, if someone doesn't pay, it's going to go to collections, or if we happen to come, interact with them some other way at the city, and they need some other type of permit, boat license, boat permit, pier permit, things like that, we can try to collect our past debts at that time, and we, and we do that actively. And, and we've used that for a number of different things that are with the city.
And quite honestly, I wouldn't mind if we took the car on the second offense. You know, I know we're talking about the third offense, but if we have a big fine up front, that, if I've given my, my car to my son or my daughter, and they're out and they get, you know, caught with this, and we've got a big fine to pay, A, I'm angry, and that's never going to happen again, or I'm not loaning my car, period. Because if I do, and I don't care if next time it's Jerry driving it, and he gets busted, they take my car. I'm not giving my car out. You know, that's just, you know, fool me once, you know, fool me twice, it's my fault.
Well, one of the, one of the things I'll, I'd offer up is that, and we've talked about not impacting the owner of the vehicle if they loan their car to someone. I can tell you, if you do tow on the second offense or whatever, the owner gets involved then. I mean, so, so there's really no way, if you're going to tow a vehicle at all, there's no way to shield an owner from being involved in that, at that level. So just, just keep that in mind.
All right. Does anybody have anything else they want to say? If we, well, we'll, we'll stop where we are right now.
So what it sounds like I'd need to do is look to see if there's a way to track multiple offenses from the squad car.
That would be the first thing that we, we need that information.
And then I, I hear that, that some of you express a desire to do a graduated structure, and we'll, we'll look at seeing how we might be able to do that.